And we're ready whenever you are, ma'am.
Good evening and thank you for attending tonight's city council meeting. For those who are attended remotely, the camera in the chambers is set up to show those attending in person tonight. The platform we are using has a raise hand feature. You will notice a picture of the hand in the upper right hand corner. When we reach a point in the meeting where the public has the opportunity to address council, you can click that button and be given your opportunity to address council. Please stand for the pledge of allegiance. Kathy, would you please call the roll?
Mayor Scally.
Here.
Counselor Dillabow.
Here.
Counselor Fisher.
Here.
Counselor Kennedy.
Here.
Counselor Powers.
Here.
Counselor Reese. Counselor Scamperly.
Here.
Quorum present.
Uh, Counselor Reese is unable to attend tonight's uh meeting due to family matters. He has to be excused. Is there a consensus to excuse Counselor Reese?
Yes.
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 We have two presentations tonight. We will begin with Augsburg Land Bank Corporation Chairman Jim Morrison.
Thank you for that introduction, mayor. I I know several of the members of city council. I don't know everybody, so. Uh, I am Jim Morrison and the newly elected uh chair of the Augsburg Land Bank. Prior chairman Phil Cosmo, who's been uh in that role since 2018, uh decided not to run for reelection. So here I am. Um, I'm here to do the 22 annual highlight report. I think you folks have that. Just I'll hit some some of the highlights from that and uh certainly we can answer questions or an hour at a later point if you have them. Um, since this is the end of our fifth year of operation, since we've been here, we've acquired 23 properties. We have demolished uh 14 uh others, none in 22. We have completed three rehabilitations, uh, two of which were sold in 22, one was sold earlier. Uh, we have purchased two new single family homes through a very nice arrangement we have with Bosse's, where those modular homes are manufactured. We uh purchased and placed one on Ogden Street, which sold. Uh, and we purchased and placed one on Berry Street, which we are going to get back to this spring and hope to have on the market. You know, before summer. Um, as I said, we have done some side lots with buildings that have been taken down. Um, 11 of those have sold. We have three remaining in our inventory. Um, obviously hoping to sell those at any point. We've done notices to neighbors, which is typically where that uh interest lies. Um, we have sold two properties in 2022. Uh, we sold a third one, the former um synagogue on Green Street. Was sold in 2023, so it's not part of this report, but it did happen. Um, and again, the the demolitions, I think it's important to note that while we have uh, our estimation is there's about 1.1 million dollars in assessed value from properties that we have acquired rehabbed and sold or or new homes to put back on the tax rolls. Uh, the other side of that is cost avoidance with demolitions takes the liability off the city. The land bank takes it over. Um, and uh, that's cost avoidance for for us as a as a group. And so I think we work together quite well on those as we acquire them and then decide uh whether they can be rehabbed or or have to be demoed. Uh, new construction currently, we have uh in our inventory four buildable lots. Um, we are not currently under any kind of uh construction, but we hope to maybe relook at that as funding allows a little later in the year. Um, we like to hold on to those because we do uh part of, you know, what we want to do is to put up new structures and and do new construction as opposed to just constantly demoing things. Um, looking ahead, a little bit of a snapshot, we have, there's uh two grants that we are currently involved with. Phase one and two of uh New York State uh money that was made available through homes and community renewal. Uh, we were successful in phase one. We received a hundred thousand dollars or will receive a hundred thousand dollars. That money has to be spent on administrative expenses. Our hope is that we will be able to contract with uh some accounting help and um as well as a pop project manager to allow someone to be out in the field to meet with contractors and and speak for the speak for the board on projects that, you know, may be underway. So we think those are both um viable options and and we have started to look uh for people to fill those roles. Phase two of the grant, which we have submitted an application for, we won't know for another couple of months where that stands. That will allow us to acquire more properties and we are um put together a list that will be uh discussed with uh the city, I'm sure. Uh, as that becomes available and and we determine how much of those grants, if we get the whole thing or only part of that grant, that will obviously affect how much of those, how many of those properties uh we would ask to to uh to acquire. Um, again, I think that's, you know, since this uh uh inception of the the land bank in 2018, uh, you know, we've, we've really been a good partner for the city, I believe. Uh, I think we've, we've been successful in putting properties back on the tax roll. Been successful in uh helping to get rid of blighted properties and ultimately allow uh neighbors, homeowners in that area to to expand their their uh lots or or footprints. Um, and again, go through um tax roll, you know, properties back on the rolls as well as the cost avoidance of properties that uh we've taken over that that, you know, kind of come away from the city having to to worry about with either liability or upkeep. Um, I think it's important that in the end, we continue to work together, the city and the land bank, because I think that's the only, you know, the funding that originally came from New York State is not there anymore. Uh, the original type of funding, now it's more grants and and things that we need to work together uh to to be successful in. And I and I hope that that will continue as we move forward. Uh, again, I just think it's such a, the land bank is such a win-win for the city. I just, I can't say that enough. So um on in your packet, there is uh the final page of that, I think, is a list of all of our properties that that we have left. If you have any questions on that, it kind of gives you a little bit of a highlight of, you know, the the inventories that we that we currently have. Um, I think the presentation is um the 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 actual report is a little fancier with some pictures and some things that of some things that we've done, but the highlights, I think, have a little more of that detail on them. I guess that that kind of uh hits the highlights. If there's any questions, I'd be happy to answer some or any.
I think you've done a tremendous job, tremendous job, and and you are making a big difference. Everyone involved in it.
We appreciate that. The board, you know, takes its uh takes looking at these things very seriously and and uh, again, we do feel like we're a good partner.
So uh, yeah, it it's an excellent program. It's one of the best things that we've got. So on the on the phase two funding, is there a specific number that we apply for for this bank?
Uh, I I believe it's 400,000.
So when I'm looking at this, this is a New York State program. There's not a lot of land banks in New York, correct? There's only like 13?
Uh, yeah.
Yeah.
25.
25, alright. I was thinking that or 20.
Yeah. A lot of them though, uh, are attached to more countywide. You know, we're one of the few that's just a as small footprint as a city. Most of them are countywide.
So on 50 million in the state budget and in past state budgets, Augsburg is getting it. It's it's I I think it's a great program. I'll take anything we can get. Sure. Don't want to seem ungrateful, but do you think the state is equitable in in dividing up the resources like that?
I mean, that's a great question. I I think that as, you know, in any of these programs and anything that I've seen uh in in my career in a number of ways that involve the state, you know, it seems like more money goes to bigger communities. I think that's, you know, that that's an unfortunate reality.
Yeah.
But I but I don't think we're forgotten. I think that the couple of times that I've been involved in uh discussions with uh some of the people that we uh, you know, have have written grants with or or talked to at New York State uh about these things that, you know, they seem to know who we are and what we're trying to do. So, you know, I I think we're, I think we're represented. You know, again, is it is it as good as it could be? Probably not, but.
I think if we can get four or 500,000 dollars a year for this little community, that's that's pretty good money.
Yeah, I say, I I don't disagree with you. I think this, you know, the grants have to keep uh, it it, I think it's a commitment by the state that that was the way they see these bank land banks being funded as opposed to where the original money came from back in 2018. I think that was a one-time kind of thing, but uh, yeah, I think we will continue to try to work and be successful with those. And I I think there are a lot of properties that we can, you know, ultimately uh, you ultimately help with.
Yeah, just take a ride.
Exactly, exactly.
What about for uh, instead of just blighted property, what if what if a homeowner wanted to have money to fix up their house? Or even a landlord? Is there money available through the land bank system?
I I don't think that's, I don't think that's a, you know, land bank use. I I again, I'm not, I I'm not uh quite as technically versed as in some of that, but I don't think I've ever seen, I mean, in essence, it really is the acquisition of properties once they work their way through through you folks and and then we either, you know, try to demo rehab. I don't see, we have, we were able to use some funding to help one homeowner after a fire, but I think that was a particular chunk of money that we identified that was going to be sent back to the to the grantor because we weren't able to spend it and we kind of came in at the last minute and tried to help that. And and we were able to help that um homeowner redo part of their home. They're not finished with it, but our part of it's done. So that was yeah, I I'm not sure those kind of funds are still there, but you know, we're always looking at that kind of thing.
Has the dynamics of what uh we can use the money for changed since 2018?
Uh.
I thought a part of it was also to keep homeowners in their homes.
Yeah, I think they, I I I think some of it, and I think some of the funding in this grant is a little less designed to be like top to bottom rehab. They want more uh us to come in and stabilize a property and then perhaps with a contractor or, you know, somebody else to buy it and go from there. That's a good example of how we did the uh, you know, the former synagogue, you know, we we really only did one part of that building, the bottom, which is a wonderful space. And I think will be a really nice home eventually. You know, we weren't able to get to because our funding didn't allow it to go that far. Um, so it is, it has changed a little bit, but I still think for the most part, um, you know, they they want to see, they don't want to see all dep demos. There is, you know, we can still do some, but I think, you know, new construction is is a piece of it, but stabilization is a term we hear a lot more with this latest grant. Good questions. Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay.
Very much.
If I could, just I'd be remiss if I didn't end by saying just how valuable Andrea Smith is to us. We would be flailing in the dark if it wasn't for her. So uh, my thanks to to Andrea and thank you for listening this evening.
Well, and I think another important note is the fact that everyone who serves is a volunteer, correct? So this is something that is done from individuals who truly want to improve the community. This is not a paid position. This is something that's truly volunteer and in the world we live in, volunteers are very, very hard to come by. So if you could please convey from myself that, you know, the volunteers that are on the board are greatly appreciated and we do appreciate what's what's happening and moving the city forward.
Thank you very much. That's nice to hear.
Thanks again. Our next presentation is the East David Street preliminary engineering report.
Good evening, councilmember. I'm uh Matt Cooper with Barton La Judas. My colleague, John Candino. Uh, the city retained our firm last year to begin an evaluation of the reconstruction and replacement of utilities on East David Street um from Park to Hamilton. It's about a three tenths mile street with uh, you know, some aging infrastructure in the ground there, um, some water mains that have had a history of breaking. Um, your uh storm catch basins are still tied into your sanitary sewer there. Uh, some reported backups into homes at times during wet weather conditions because of introducing stormwater water into your sanitary. So uh, our firm took took a look at that, um, how we could lay out the new utilities within the street. Um, currently, your water and sewer um are within 10 feet of each other in several places along the street. Uh, health regulations require those to have a 10-foot minimum separation. So we're trying to get uh water, sewer, storm water and the existing gas line within, you know, fairly tight footprint. So we uh, we looked at that layout and the um construction efforts that would be required to achieve that. And, you know, most importantly, the conclusion of the evaluation was putting together a project budget for that. Um, we prepared a preliminary engineering report that walks you through our evaluation, uh, the different alternatives that we looked at with a conclusion of here are the costs and here are our recommendations on how to proceed. Uh, this is the important first step of undertaking um an infrastructure project. As you have gone through them prior, the quality of your engineering report um sometimes dictates your success in achieving funding. This is going to be your instrument to sell your project to the funding agencies. And for this one, we would target primarily the water and sewer uh funding sources. So those are typically New York State EFC. They have both water and sewer funding programs and USDA World Development has both water and sewer funding programs as you're probably aware of with your past capital projects. Um, with that, um, you know, we have a conclusion in the report and we identify potential funding sources. Um, those scenarios of, well, if you, what if you get this grant and what if you get this financing? And we show several scenarios as is this time, we can't tell you what you will or won't get. We just want to present the different ways this may unfold and in the end, what that results in user rates. I mean, that's really where the rubber hits the road on these projects is what does it do to our user costs, to our city resident costs? So I put together a little cheat sheet for you. Um, that engineering part, if you took the time to read it, unless you fell asleep after page five or six or seven. I I made it, I made you the little Cliff Notes version here. Um, that really, I just extracted pretty much verbatim certain portions of the engineering report that I really just want to draw your attention to. So kind of the alternative options that we have in there, um, don't deviate significant. I mean, bottom line is you need to replace the water, sewer and the storm water. You know, that's really it and reconstruct the street because replacing those within the street footprint is pretty much going to tear up the entire street. Um, so you would end up with a complete new reconstruction from the sub base up of the street. So on the water, we looked at two scenarios. When you're replacing the water main, are we just going to reconnect the service laterals right to it, right there? Or are we going to reconnect or replace the water service laterals from that main out both sides toward the homes, at least to the street right away? Because quite often, it doesn't really, or most instances, it doesn't make sense to leave 50, 60, 70-year-old water lines underneath a brand-new street that you just had completely torn up. Um, but we did look at that just to see what the cost difference would be. Same with the sewer. We looked at those two scenarios. Do we just reconnect the sewer laterals to the new main? Or do you replace the laterals as well, at least out both sides to the street right away? The additional alternative we looked at with sewer, um, along with the laterals is do we go with concrete curbing or granite curbing? Um, there was a desire to see what that cost difference is. So we show all those alternates up top and then, you know, the next little table is us mixing and matching those options. So we matched option one with one A and one with one B. So those are the options with water and sewer that did not include the service lateral replacements. And then we paired option two with two A and two with two B to show the pairing of the options for including the laterals. And as you can see, the capital cost range from uh 4.29 million up to 4.47 million. Really, the difference from the base to the top is less than 2%. Um, really not a significant difference, which obviously led us to the conclusion of you replace the service laterals uh for both water and sewer while you're doing this. And then the subsequent two tables below are the breakout of the water versus sewer. So some of it's a little bit splitting hairs, you know, which pavement is as a result of the water project and which pavement replaces, replacement is due to the sewer project, but we had to have a division. And we spoke with the funding agencies in preparing this um about having both water and sewer in one engineering part. And they were fine with it, but they wanted to see the cost broken out in the end. So we would fund these as two separate projects. We would pursue water funding. We would pursue sewer funding. In the end, we're going to marry that funding into one project. But this shows you the breakout with, you know, four different funding scenarios. So if you were to get zero grant and had to finance the entire water project, you're looking at about a $20 rate increase per EDD, EDU equivalent dwelling unit. Now, if you've encountered that acronym in your patent projects, that's representative of a single-family household. Whereas, you know, if we can pile a couple of grants on top of each other and get favorable financing, you may look at a rate increase as low as uh $5.82 for single-family household. And then down the sewer, you know, expand out because there are a couple more grant programs to look at. Again, mixing and matching those, you're looking at a rate increase anywhere from $10 to $29 for single-family household. So at this point, what we would uh, what we would do in our course of action in a project of this nature is uh, once we have um, city comments on the report, if there's anything you want us to explore further, any questions you have, any concerns with with how the report's repaired, we would want to address those. And um, after that, we want to send those to the regulatory agencies. So on the water health department and on the sewer DEC, uh, those are the regulatory bodies that oversee municipal water and sewer, get any comments they have on the report and then, but then we want to start pursuing the funding. Um, and we would want to try to secure as much as we could for you through all those programs. I mean, throw it all at the wall and see what sticks.
So I'd like to see, of course, as much funding as possible secured. Question, does this cost include the cost of reviving subsurface sidewalks?
Everything.
Is there uh any other grant money perhaps that would pick up some of that cost and go across each individual home?
Right, so it's an a necessary incidental cost to the water and sewer, so it's actually being covered by the water and sewer funding. Um, there aren't, I mean, other than um, you know, traditional CHIPS funding, there aren't really other separate grant programs for for street reconstruction.
CHIPS has a separate uh fund for stuff like this that we had to tear it off. But if that's already included, so when I'm looking at, you know, a couple of the lower-end scenarios, it still looks like about perhaps a 1.7 and a quarter million to the taxpayers in the city, the city cost after these grants. Should we get best-case scenario grants?
Um, so on the water, um, best-case scenario leaves you with, I think, the lowest financing we showed on there was about 748,000.
Yeah.
Um, and then there's another one with as little financing as 561,000.
Okay.
Yep.
That's on the sewer.
That was on the water.
Oh, okay, yeah.
Yep. So the first finance or the, I'm sorry, the second um funding scenario column shows a in New York State EFC loan of 748,000. Yep. And then the fourth column shows financing through USDA World Development of 561,000. And again, these are just scenarios um until we apply and find out if you're awarded or not awarded. These are just what ifs.
Were you uh successful in separating the sewer and the storm water?
Yeah, I mean, the the scenario that we have laid out for the project would include separating them on East David Street.
Nice.
Correct. Yep.
Any other issues that?
You know, this is a challenging time for us to uh to estimate construction costs. Um, you know, what what we've had to do in the last year with the continuing escalation of cost is, you know, we've looked, it's, the projection is, has been going like this. So with a capital project of this nature, we know, you know, it's not happening this year with the process of designing it, um, getting it funded, putting it out to bid, you know, this could be a 2024, 2025 construction project. So we project that continued inflation out for a couple of years. Um, historically, we've done that projection at 3% per year. That wouldn't get you to where real costs are in the past few years. So, you know, we've looked at that continuing climb um and made those level projections with pretty fat contingencies on projects. Just, we've seen a lot of project budgets blown up in the last couple of years. Yeah.
I don't want all of a sudden, two years down the road, whatever council's sitting here, you know, I thought it was going to cost this much and there's another $2.45 million.
Yeah, we've done our best to to pad this as much as possible under the recent uncertainty of cost. Um, now, the good news is our, you know, the last three, four months of opening bids, we have seen that start to plateau off. So instead of the continuing climb, it does seem to be stabilizing.
So if we can get loans for this amount, might even reduce cities.
Potentially.
So in this project, does everything run to Patterson Street in terms of the sewer? Is Patterson Patterson Street the the latest uh modern, I guess, if you would, uh sewer run?
Correct.
Everything runs to Patterson Street?
It does. I'm fairly certain.
From both sides. So everything should be fairly easy to tie into there.
Yeah, I mean, we were able to gather all the existing information on inverts and manholes to make sure we had, you know, enough elevation to tie everything in and.
Because we've had some issues with that. I don't know if it's this particular area, but I think there's more. So just wondering if we're going to overtax that system.
At Patterson?
Yeah.
I I mean, if from Patterson down, I mean, you you, it seems you have sufficient capacity and everything that's constructed in place.
It should be better if you taking some of the storm water out from that area. So that should help.
The existing manholes, I didn't see any in our evaluation that appeared to be to that condition. I don't know, nothing of that severe condition. Yeah, I mean, we would do soil borings. Once we get to design, if you, you know, just continue to proceed, um, once we start to design process, we would do soil soil borings to make sure we understand as much as we can about the subsurface conditions. In in spots, it was a little tight in in the layout. Um, I mean, it appears we can keep all the proper separations and make everything fit within the street.
And a perfect, excuse me, uh, in a perfect world, if you're looking at a project date of a year and a half to two years out, how quickly do you think we'd be able to turn around and find out how quickly we'd get the financing?
Um, you would pursue.
What's the time, what's the timeframe, I suppose? If we were to apply next week or, well, I don't want to step on Henry's toes, but whenever Henry could get him out the door.
That's a challenging question to answer, only because I don't know what this project's success will be with funding. We have projects out of the gate that are awarded everything they applied for for grants and loans the first year. I have projects that have been applying literally for 10 years trying to get to that threshold where they're competitive enough with other projects to receive grants and loans. I mean, the average is probably two to three years.
Yeah.
I mean, the wheels turn slowly, unfortunately.
Yeah, I know. I I just curious as.
Glacial speed at times.
I guess that's it for questions. Thank you very much.
Have a great evening.
Thank you.
Uh, we do not have any public hearings tonight, so this brings us to. We do not have any public hearings tonight, so this brings us to personal appearance. At this time, anyone attending in person would like to address counsel, please come down to the podium, you have five minutes. Is there anyone attending remotely?
I do not see any hands raised.
And this brings us to correspondence. I believe we have one letter.
Yes, Mayor. Dear Augsburg City Council members, I am writing this letter to make an offer on the property located at 420 Lafayette Street. As you know, it has been vacant for some time and has received no bids or interest at the past two auctions in which it was featured. I would like to offer $8,000 for this property and would be interested in hearing your thoughts on the matter. Please feel free to contact me via letter, email, or phone. Respectfully, Mr. Walter Bracy.
Thank you, Kathy. Next, we have our consent agenda that the claims is enumerated in General Fund Warrant number six dash 2023, the amount of 600,000, 604,526 dollars and 64 cents. And Library Warrant number six dash 2023, an amount of $0. And Capital Fund Warrant number six dash 2023, an amount of 65,345 dollars and 97 cents. And Community Development Fund Warrant number six dash 2023, an amount of $75.98. And Community Renewal Fund Warrant number six dash 2023, an amount of $0, $0. As audited being the same hereby, I order so moved. Kathy, would you please call the roll?
Mayor Scally?
Yes.
Counselor Dilaba?
Yes.
Counselor Fisher?
Yes.
Counselor Kennedy?
Yes.
Counselor Powers?
Yes.
Counselor Scamperly?
Yes.
Approved.
We have one appointment tonight, and I'll make a motion to appoint Attorney Copeland to a three-year term on the Zoning Board of Appeals, term to begin March 27th, 2023, and then March 27th, 2026. I saw move.
Second.
Kathy, would you please call the roll?
Counselor Kennedy?
Yes.
Counselor Powers?
Yes.
Counselor Scamperly?
Yes.
Mayor Scally?
Yes.
Counselor Dilaba?
Yes.
Counselor Fisher?
Yes.
Approved.
And this brings us to item for council action. Our first item of business will be read by city manager.
It's bill number 37 on the top.
I would like to call on to figure resolution to calling for a public hearing and a notice regarding ordinance amendment of chapter 209 of the Augsburg Municipal Code. And this is a call for a public hearing and public notice to amend the chapter 209, section 54, scheduled 2027, time limit parking on of the Augsburg Municipal Code.
A second.
Kathy, would you please call the roll?
Counselor Powers?
Yes.
Counselor Scamperly? Mayor Scally?
Yes.
Counselor Dilaba?
Yes.
Counselor Fisher?
Yes.
Counselor Kennedy?
Yes.
Approved.
Our next item of business will be read by Director of Plan and Development, Andrea Smith.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. This is a resolution authorizing new fees at the Elsa M. Lusic Pool. Whereas the City of Augsburg operates the municipal pool for use by the public, and whereas the City of Augsburg City Council establishes the fees for recreation activities and use of facilities, and whereas after a review of the rate scheduled by staff and the Recreation Commission, there is a recommendation to increase fees as outlined in the attached table for the 2023 season. This is the same table that was submitted when we addressed the fees for the Dubisky Visitor Center. It was included with the packet, and it takes into account the 2023 approved budget, specifically the revenue line associated with the pool.
I'll move that.
I'll second, okay, go ahead.
Kathy, would you please call the roll?
Counselor Scamperly? Mayor Scally?
No.
Counselor Dilaba?
Yes.
Counselor Fisher?
Yes.
Counselor Kennedy?
Yes.
Counselor Powers?
Yes.
Approved.
Our next item of business will be again read by Andrea Smith.
This is a resolution to accept the East David Street Preliminary Engineering Report. Whereas the City of Augsburg has received funding through a 2021 Consolidated Funding Applications Process, specifically New York State Community Development Block Grant Program in the amount of $50,000. And whereas the purpose of this grant was to complete a preliminary engineering report for East David Street Reconstruction Project, now therefore be resolved that the Augsburg City Council accepts the P E R as presented at the March 27th, 2023 City Council Meeting by Barton and Le Judas, and authorizes the city manager to submit all necessary documents to close out C D B G grant 836 C P 61.
I'll second that. Kathy, would you please call the roll?
Mayor Scally?
Yes.
Counselor Dilaba?
Yes.
Counselor Fisher?
Yes.
Counselor Kennedy?
Yes.
Counselor Powers?
Yes.
Counselor Scamperly?
Yes.
Approved.
And that brings us to old business. Does anyone have any old business?
You know, Gar was here at the last meeting explaining a little bit that assessment. People are a little frightened by what's going to happen here with the citywide evaluation. And so I'm wondering if there's an easy way, without burdening people too much, to say if this is our new rebuild, then this would be the new tax rate, if, if the budget were to stay exactly the same, the amount of revenue. Is that possible to do that?
In a fairly easy way, yes. Are you a gentleman?
Oh, all right. Okay, good.
So we would just, the hope was always that if the assessments went up, we could lower the tax rate and.
Yeah, what you're asking is really a simple, simple question. There's a taxable value that you had last year. There's a budget that you had that creates a tax rate. If the, the new numbers, when they come out from Gar, there's going to be a new assessed value for the city, a new taxable value for the city. You just simply divide that into that budget and you have a very simple answer.
That's what I was hoping, and I think the city needs, needs to get that message out to people. So, you know, if somebody, let's say if somebody's assessment went up $20,000, by the way, this would be the new, the new city tax rate should, should our preliminary report stand.
Exactly, I, we don't know what the new budget would be though.
Right, obviously, at that time. But I'm just saying, if we were to apply that to like, let's say, this year's numbers.
You can, you can do that.
I think it's, it's prudent for the city to do that because I noticed when I watched on Channel 7 News, the Platon announcement of the new assessment, so people were up in arms and seen, and I don't, I don't know the steps that they took to, to kind of settle people, but I, I don't, I'd like to do, take, look at this cautiously before we just go tell everybody what the new assessment is, things like that, you know what I'm saying?
And I'll, I'll address more of that, I guess I'm coming up later here in items of discussion.
Okay.
But the answer to your question is, yeah, it's, it's a simple.
We can adjust the city's budget, but the, the new, the tax increase, the reassessment and, and increase in that would be an increase in school taxes and, and county taxes, and those are the big ones. I mean, the school.
What you're, you're, what you're looking forward to is that hopefully the budgets are staying the same, and with the increase in assessment and taxable value, the tax rates will be going down. That's what you're hoping.
Yeah, that's, that was always the hope, that the, the city would follow that.
Yes.
Yeah.
He's trying to drag down our constitution of tax.
Well, the, the, their issue is that, you know, it's going to be a real burden if the, if the school doesn't, you know, bring their tax rate down and.
Well, they have a tax gap the same as other municipalities do.
But with the reassessment.
The school letting it decrease as well, because they have the same exact scenario we have.
That I, I don't know, I don't know. Okay.
Thank you. Is there any other old business? And this brings us to new business. Does anyone have any new business? Oh, yes.
So I would like to, I have three items to be discussed today. On behalf of the City of Augsburg, I would like to recognize and applaud the exemplary service of Katie Lauder, Laxier, a small business owner, and Joe Sawie of the Augsburg Fire Department, for their quick thinking and tireless efforts in preventing a potential fire in Richard Levinson's home today, and that was a testament to their commitment to the safety and well-being of our community. Katie's keen sense of smell and prompt communication with the Augsburg Fire Department, along with Joe's diligent investigation, led to the discovery of not just one, but six birds stuck in water heater ventilation pipe, and their persistence and dedication to ensure that there are, there were no other potential hazards in the home were very truly commendable. So we are very grateful to their selfishness and bravery, which undoubtedly saved the lives on property, and I want to recognize their, their contributions to the city. And the next item I want to do, speak about is, I'm very humbled to have been chosen as the city manager for the City of Augsburg by unanimous consent of the city council. It is a great responsibility to be here and to be entrusted with the task of improving the city, and I take it very seriously. Unfortunately, there has been an ongoing debate surrounding the hiring of firefighters since I took office. I understand the Augsburg Fire Department Union has a contract that runs till December 2025, and this contract is quite lucrative. However, after carefully considering the fiscal impact in both short and long term, as well as the morale of the staff, I have decided to direct Fire Chief Ken Stahl to hire two firefighters immediately. I realize this decision may be controversial, given the past discourse between the city council and the union. Nevertheless, I firmly believe that this move is necessary to improve the staff morale, enhance fire safety, and ultimately save the overtime and minimum staffing costs. And I calmly request that the Augsburg Fire Union consider this decision as a goodwill gesture and take it into account during the future negotiations with the city. I am committed to working together with all stakeholders to build a better future for the City of Augsburg. And the next item is to form a citizen's staff force, and I would like to request the council's approval to set up a citizen's staff, task force, to enhance the social economic development and develop a comprehensive plan that is an inclusive process with citizens' participation, and I would welcome any discussion of.
I think that is a fantastic idea and something, especially in the past several years, we have seen a dramatic increase in community involvement and a variety of individuals looking to become involved in the community. I think it would be great to do like an informational meeting, people that are interested can come find out what you're looking for in a member of that type of organization, what the commitments are, and things like that, and then there could be a selection process. But I think that's, that's a great, a great thing to get, get started here.
There has been some community development plans done in the past from discussing with this, uh, community members, and the feedback I got was, there was not much of citizens' participation and input. So I wanted to open up to the public to be able for the citizens to comment, for them to make, give us the direction, because they are the ones who would like to see which direction we want to proceed with. There are a lot of people that have moved from outside of the, uh, different parts of the US, as well as people who are living here. We understand that there is a growing population that, that, that is aging, as well as there is a significant amount of people that's moving town because they don't have certain opportunities. So to bring that community development aspect, as well as to bring economic development, I thought having a comprehensive plan would help for the future of the city.
Very good move. I think we absolutely have to have economic development. We do have a lot of participation, as you both were saying. We had a large citizens group and business group organize some, some fishing tournaments here, and, and our fisheries are just awesome here in St. Lawrence, and I'd like to bring that back. I'd like to bring, put us back on the map with these, with these tournaments, these fishing tournaments. Thing about Augsburg, it's right in the middle, you know, of the St. Lawrence, and they want to come here, they, they want to be welcomed here, and I think that's just one of the things that we need to do. We have some citizens in this town that go out of their way, Rhonda Rathell, I mean, just, just to throw a pet on the back, she does so much to try and get the city going. I'm sure she'd be glad to participate and give advice, and she's got a lot of experience with that, so.
There has been tremendous, I mean, at this point, even people have volunteered their time on this kind of thing. I'm really appreciative of the community that, you know, surrounds, surrounds me. I'm very thankful and I'm really blessed to have people in Augsburg that, that wants to make a change, pay change and make, make this a better place.
Yeah, oh, absolutely. Everybody wants to see this town built, so.
And it announced, or we're on the items for discussion? That's good. Okay, thank you. And this brings us to items for discussion, and we'll begin with Police Chief Mark Burns.
Good evening.
Evening, Chief.
Here to speak about the 2023 COPS grant, which has recently opened up for application. We applied for this grant last year, and we did not receive it. I'm making speculation on why we didn't receive it, but my thoughts are simply that we asked for too many officers. We asked for four, and we asked for four because you can ask for up to 20% of your current staffing, so at 19, roughly, that's four officers. By looking at the awards of other communities in New York State, the closest in our size was the County of Livingston Sheriff's Office, and they're, they're much larger than us. The Sheriff's Office Road Patrol is 32 members, and they received three officers, so that's roughly quick math, 10% of their, their staff. So I, if we do apply here, I will probably apply for two officers. I think that's much more reasonable for the grant, that's, seems to be in line with what the awards are that were received. And what COPS stands for is Community Oriented. And what COPS stands for is Community Oriented Policing. And as I dug into this grant last year, uh, it really dug into strategic partners. And what are these officers, these additional officers to your current staffing? Um, going to do with these strategic partners? And what are they going to do for your community other than just, um. Be extra officers? Yes, they take into account your current economic situation. Um, I will provide all that data. I can provide council minutes. I can provide, uh. Everything showing our hardships that we have here and that we financially need these officers. But I really have to have a driving force of. A community relationship with, um, some other services within our our community. And what these additional officers are going to do. And thinking long term with a grant, I have to have some sort of. Data that I can actually grasp and report back to the grant to say what these officers are doing. We work with human services programs throughout this city on a daily basis. And in some informal conversations with a lot of these services. We're already doing these types of programs. It's just documenting that we're doing these things, such as. Dealing with those that are in crises, whether it be, uh, mental health issues, homelessness, or dealing with substance use issues. We're really avoiding arrests at all costs and trying to point, uh, these subjects that need our help. Into situations of, uh, obtaining some sort of a human surface services. And it's just documenting those and continuing to develop these partnerships. So. Um, that's what I would like to do. Um, with any grant, it comes down to finances, right? What's the city's? Um, cost going to be if we were awarded such a grant? Um, the COPS grant will pay for up to three quarters. Of the starting salary and fringe benefits of an officer for three years of time. Um, but that's capped at a hundred and twenty-five thousand dollars over that three-year period. Uh. At our current salary rates for new officers and for what we're paying for insurance. We would roughly be paying thirty-one thousand dollars a year for for each officer, so. But if we didn't have a grant, a new hires roughly seventy-five thousand dollars a year to include, uh, all their health costs and all fringe benefits and salaries. So. Um, we're not quite going to get us three quarters paid, but we're going to get roughly a sixty percent pay out of this grant if we were awarded. So if, uh, we're awarded two officers, of course, then we're paying sixty-two thousand a year instead of a hundred and fifty thousand, so. And and then the catch is, if you want to call it a catch, after your three years of the grant paying for these officers. You have to maintain these officers for a period of twelve months afterwards, so. And I don't have to immediately hire these officers. I have, uh, a five-year time period to hire these two officers or if we're awarded to. Because they take into account that there's recruiting that has to be done. There might not be a valid civil service list. It takes a while to do background checks. Uh, and the hiring process itself takes takes time as well. So. You have a five-year period and they'll pay for these again for three years of time. Um, and these have to be additional officers, um, to our current staffing. They will allow for rehires such as. If we did lay, we did cut a position in our our budget last year. We did lay off. Um, not an officer by name, but we did cut a position so we could put in to replace that position. That would bring our staff into twenty and then an additional officer on top of that would back to twenty-one officers of if the grant was approved. And again, if the grant was approved, we wouldn't know, uh, the result of that to approximately October of this year, so. That basically sums up the grant. Uh, the due date for the application, I believe, is May eighth, May sixth or May eighth. I'll have to check on that, but. We got a little over a month to to finish up here and I have to really key in again on those strategic partnerships. Um. Have these organizations, uh, be willing to write a letter of recommendation for us. Um, as I have with with them in the past, I'm sure they they'll they'll do the same for us. Last year, we had letters of recommendation from both our U S senators, um, as well as, uh, Police Stefanic. Both are, um, then, uh. Assemblyman Mark Walzick, now our Senator, Patty Ritchie as well, um. Mayor Skelly wrote a letter as well in support of this last year. So again, the more letters we can get, uh, and support, the better. I can attach all that. I can attach all our our meeting notes from here showing our economic issues as well. And we'll give it another shot. I don't mind doing the work on the matter. I feel a little bit more comfortable this year than did last year since we dove dove into it more. We don't need a resolution on the matter of this, but I'm sure it would sure help to have a council support. To be united from asking, uh. The Department of Justice to, uh, pay for two of our officers for for a three-year time period.
What about a letter from the Sheriff's Department? Sean Brandt was here a while back talking about our partnership. Sure, that would be.
I'm certain that the sheriff would write a letter.
Don't move. You got mine.
Can we get a resolution on the next agenda?
Okay, thank you. Any questions? Chief.
All right, thank you.
Uh, next is offseason uses for the Lockwood Arena. And Recreation Director Mackenzie Cole will do that.
Yep, I just wanted to introduce our Recreation Director Mackenzie Cole. And so this kind of came at a request of council to talk about. Uses from, uh, in the arena in the sort of offseason between when the ice comes out and when we start to see, uh, uses in the. Late spring and summer, uh, but it also came from our director directly, who was thinking about how to make better use of the facility. So. Mackenzie Cole is going to give you, uh, an update on her thoughts as well as the conversations that she's had with the Recreation Commission.
How's it going, guys?
Good.
So my idea is I would like to have pickleball in the Lockwood Arena, um, until we can get everything ready for the nice weather. Um, I would like to do that on Tuesdays and Thursdays from nine AM to twelve PM. Um, I am going to charge a fee. I did look around at other areas around here that do offer this in the offseason as well, and at Pot Sam they do as it. They charge three dollars, um, for two hours. Um, I would like to charge five dollars for three hours. Um, at this time, that's just the dates and, um. Days and times that we did discuss in the Rec Commission. We would obviously move forward if there is way more interest in it. Um, but that's actually going to have to come back from the public to let me know. We also right now are using it as the youth lacrosse. Uh, they are using it for practice time until they can get on the fields and until the fields are ready for us to maintain for them for the season. If you guys have any have any other ideas for me to use for the Lockwood, I would definitely take them into consideration.
Any promotional events?
For recreation in general?
Uh, you know, small concerts, things like that, uh, throughout the summer.
It's stuff I can look into. Um, I just know. In the summertime, it it does get very hot because it's not insulated in there. Um, so that is one big concern I do have though in the summertime.
What about doing things like that in the parks?
In the parks? Absolutely.
Norwood has a concert series.
Yep.
Every week, I think. And I think it's like a weeknight, too.
Mm-hmm, yeah, they partner with, uh, I believe the Chamber with their, uh, village. Uh, because I did look into this last year as well for, uh, certain bands and all that that would come and play.
County Chamber, can you help us?
I can talk to Laura.
I think we have local bands right here in Augsburg.
Mm-hmm. I've contacted a few and they would be interested in doing this.
Just anything to create more activity here, you know, during the summer.
I agree. Any other questions?
Yes, Mackenzie, we discussed this earlier on, uh, about the Lockwood Arena being used all year round.
Mm-hmm.
There are lots of, uh, I have received some, uh, interest from from Canadian. Uh, companies, uh, schools that want to come and use our facility at a fee.
Mm-hmm.
And you mentioned that. There are some reasons why we couldn't, uh, do it. So if for the record, if you can just say the reasons that we. We can think that into a future capital improvement.
Yeah, we would definitely get the building re-insulated, um, to maintain it. Um, our compressor now. Um, Shane can talk more about the compressor too, if you guys need that. Uh, but it it's not going to be capable enough to handle the warm weather if we did do that with the building not being insulated. Um. It sometimes it gives us problems during with the ice even on. So it would definitely be a huge cost if we wanted to go forward with this. Um, just with the building in general and compressor to stabilize all that.
So what you say is the compressor is not, it's reaching its useful life?
Yes, and we've we've talked about this in previous budgets and all that, too. Yep, no problem.
Thank you. Next, uh, we're we have four twenty Lafayette Street and our City Manager Dean Mularay.
That is correct. I do.
So, um, this is regarding the four oh seven, um, for for, yeah, for winning the fire spree. So this property was on the auction. Um, and it was priced at forty-five thousand dollars. And it doesn't appear that the the offer that has been made on the table for eight thousand. Um, is reasonable. So we propose it go back to the next to be bundled into the next option. Also, in having discussion with the county recent times. They suggested that we couldn't, we could bundle these properties that does not get sold at the local auction. Into the county's auction, so that there is, um, more wider exposure and people from outside can also have, uh, a shot at it. So therefore, I I would strongly suggest that this is a very low of an offer we cannot accept. And also because of the, uh, public, public interest, we have to. To bid this. So, uh, we could definitely look at the assist value again, but it came at forty-five thousand and. The offer on the table is eight grand, which does not really pin out.
Have you had a discussion with the person? In terms of any plans that that person might have?
I did not speak to directly about, uh, about what the plans and, um, about this particular individual, but I did. Corresponded over the mail, just let me know that this was not, this even if we want to go forward. It has to go through a formal process of being able to be bid by other people. That they cannot just come straight up and, you know, offer the money. So I didn't want to this, um, entertain that negotiation before before we even. Get, uh, give a fair chance to the other idiots that would be, would have been interested in this property.
That it's possible it can be sold. Straight up because it's been through the tax auction twice. So I think after that, the city can sell it. Whether or not we want to make a color offer or not is another question. But I would suggest personally, I have only one of seven here, that, uh, you have discussion maybe with the person. When you talk about it, we're back.
Sure, I would definitely reach out to them and get get feedback from that. But looking at the acreage, I don't have the, uh. The numbers we keep for that amount of money that acreage is pretty, pretty large, a chunk of a place, so.
I mean, we were open to get a development there, uh, through an RFP process, things like that, which I fully support. You know, always did support rather than just auction it off or sell it to somebody who doesn't have a plan. And I know that that things have changed.
Sure. I will definitely reach out to them and try to get something back on that.
Next, we have, uh, our City Assessor will discuss grievance day procedures.
Back to a hot topic.
It's a hot topic. As we get closer, it's going to get hotter.
Yes, it will, and it's gonna, it's coming soon. I do want to apologize that I was not here at the GARRS, uh, meeting. Uh, I don't know, maybe you guys don't know, but I do work for two other municipalities, uh, in St. Lawrence County, and I had to be at a Aswagatchie Town Board meeting. So I apologize. Um, before we get to the grievance procedure, I just want to backtrack a little bit. And talk about where GARR is right now, and those notices are are very quickly going to be upon us. Um, we're going to be mailing them out from City Hall. Um, it will probably be very, very early April now, is what I'm told. So. Everyone in the city will be getting a change of assessment notice for each parcel. Um, GARR will instruct them on how they can challenge that assessment with the change of assessment notice. Um, what information they can present and who they can call and they can set up meetings with GARR directly. That will probably take the full month of April for GARR to get back to us. At that time, GARR is going to give us, um, secondary notices that will go out. So if, just for example, Mayor Skelly came, he got his change of assessment notice on a property. He came in and disputed one of them with the GARR associates, he would get one letter back. Uh, maybe it was changed, maybe it wasn't changed. But at that point, at the end of April, we'll have a very good indication of how many people. GARR has spoken to, how many people GARR has made changes to their assessment and. Uh, and that will give us some good information going forward with the Board of Assessment Review. Now, you, um, the City Council does appoint the Board of Assessment Review. We currently have four members on that. Um, they will be meeting the on June thirteenth this year, which is the second Tuesday in June. Um, they'll be meeting, they'll have an organizational meeting at one PM. And then they'll hear complaints between two PM and four PM and six to eight PM. At this point in time, I have no idea if all the, uh, all the complaints will be heard at that time. If not, the board would adjourn the meeting and hear complaints at a later date. So to have your complaint heard by the Board of Assessment Review. You would need to complete Form RP five twenty-four. It's available on our website. You would have to have that in by eight PM on June thirteenth this year. The board will adjourn after that if there's more hearings to be heard. Um, once the board then hears all the, here's all the complaints, they would send out letters, uh, decision letters. Yes, your assessment was changed. Here's what it was changed to, or there's no, there's no change. Beyond that, there is a a third alternative, and GARR did mention this at their presentation, that they. Um, a homeowner such as Mr. Mayor Skelly could petition a small claims assessment review hearing. And he could file paperwork and that that hearing would probably be heard in. Probably, or late August, September, and maybe even as late as October. Um, so that that covers the courses of challenges that we have. Uh, it, once the letters go out, the secondary letters go out after the meeting with GARR. Once again, we'll have a better idea of how many potential complaints we'll have. Um, I generally put together a list, a timeframe. And as appointments, as complaints come in, I assign time slots for people. I'm going to need to meet with the Board of Assessment Review to determine if that's what they want to do. If there's certain dates that they have open that they want to reconvene the hearings on. Um, a lot up in the air right now, but that is the general process.
I think it's very important that we throw out that what would the tax rate be? With that first round of.
What would it have been, actually, what I think you're saying?
Yeah, yeah. I mean, obviously, it'll change. It'll change after the first round.
Yeah, based on last year's budget or the current budget.
Right.
Yeah, yeah.
I think without that, you know. The city could be up in arms and.
A lot of time.
Better perspective of what it means, this assessment, this new assess value. Maybe less apt to have so many people come and try to agree.
Right.
One of the ideas here is you want to get more value of your property without having your taxes skyrocket, right? I mean. And and people have fought them, I think, for years, fought their their assessment because they don't, they don't want to pay the high tax.
There is a preconceived notion that my. There is a preconceived notion that my assessment went up, so therefore my taxes are going to go up. And that's not always true, especially under with the revaluation where everyone else is being.
For the whole city.
Yes.
So I think, yeah, we're in agreement on that, that that has to be part of the understanding. I think it should go off with the with the new assess values. So this this is what the tax rate would look like should.
We we can put that up on the website, or we can put that somewhere, yeah.
So that they people can compare it to, get a real idea of what's gonna happen.
Yeah, I I think what you're alluding to is just because the assessment, my assessment went up, doesn't necessarily mean my taxes are going up.
Would it be possible to get an email on who is on the Board of Assessments? I know you said they're council appointed, but I have no idea who it is.
Yes, it is right on the website.
Is it? Okay. Hi, Dale. Because I'm like, you're saying point about the council, I'm like thinking to myself, I have no idea.
I did ask Kathy Jock the.
I will. That's fine. Of course, Kathy is the answer to everything.
And there is an opening on that board, and it would be a good idea to have another person appoint. Appointment, it's up to you, city council, to appoint that person.
I can't imagine anybody of the citywide assessment coming up that's gonna jump up and down and raise their hands.
One more question in turn, I'm sorry.
Nope, I'm good.
Comparables, I know GARR said.
GARR does did a lot of research probably a year ago based on sales comparisons. They look, they reevaluate, they check all the data on the sales to make sure that they have the good sales that they're using.
Is there going to be a process where it's it's a simple process for the citizens of this town to look at those comparables?
Yes, GARR has a website for it.
Oh, excellent.
Yeah.
All right, excellent. So going back to the grievance day, July, June thirteenth, we give fifteen minute time slots to agree, is that correct?
Historically, we have given fifteen minutes during a revaluation, probably ask the board to lower that to ten, just to hear more people.
And anybody that does not have an appointment would not be able to come and do their grievances, is that correct?
Anyone that has not filed the complaint form will not be able to have a grievance heard by the board.
And that form was?
It's the RP five twenty four.
Okay.
It's the complaint on real property, and that the application that needs to be completed and given to the board for them to hear the complaint.
Kathy, is there any way back all that information? Could we do like a bullet and like have that pushed out on like the text alerts? That way, people know where to find it on the city website. Because I know a lot of people do have the text alerts now, and that technology works really great for people. They can just click on it, brings them right to the city website. So just ease of use, any part of this process, we can expedite for people. I think more people will utilize it.
Great idea, thank you.
And also, Council, Councilwoman Kennedy, we are going to also send a press release about this.
Perfect.
And also, we would like to look at multiple channels of being able to set up their appointments so that we don't have a crash of people on that day.
Right.
Yeah, that having a mob of people is at one point that is not a good idea.
Right, and everybody deserves their, well, ten minutes, fifteen.
Right.
You know what I mean, though, everybody, you know, everybody takes a lot of pride in their home, and it's very important to them. Anytime anything regarding finances or something could be viewed as a hardship, you know, you sometimes don't always get the best sides of people. So I think anything we can do to prepare them and prepare the expectations of what could come out of that meeting, it would be beneficial.
Sure.
While you're here, one of the complaints I've been getting a lot lately, and I believe Andrew told me this is state regulated, is the senior citizen's tax break. Have you been getting complaints about citizens?
I have not been getting complaints, but the income limit is very low right now, it's eighteen thousand.
Right.
And that's a gross household income. So anyone receiving fifteen hundred dollars a month, social security is basically over the
Right.
the income limit. Going forward, there is a law, New York State law going forward, that will change that to adjusted gross income. I don't know if that'll pass, I I don't know where we're going with this, this.
Well, it's interesting because social security just got.
They have eight point seven percent, and yes, I denied quite a few people this year because of that.
So I've been getting the complaints that they're losing that, and I guess it's it's quite substantial on the property.
Fifty percent on city taxes.
It's pretty substantial.
Yeah. And that's a yes or no, it's fifty percent.
Yeah, so they get more money on one hand, which isn't even close to, I'm sure, the fifty percent that we're losing by having to pay the city taxes. I don't know if we posted on that or whatever.
I don't know, you could, I mean, maybe think some point in time, you know, a senior citizen, they get a discount on their water rates or something, you know?
Yeah.
Just applied with through that exemption.
Do we have the power to do that here?
You'd have to create a law for that.
Okay. Just to kind of make up for it a little bit, because.
Other municipalities do do that and utilize like the enhanced R exemption code for reduced water rates.
Okay, that's a great idea, thank you.
Also, I think that this is, this is, this concerns the properties that were transferred within the year, and some of them were veterans, they had those tax credits. And are we capturing those credits?
We we are not, when I I I'll backtrack a little bit, a little bit farther, back to my days when I was an assessor in Monroe County. There's a thing called omitted taxes, so if I buy a house from a senior citizen who's who had a wartime or combat exemption, that would be relevered by date of purchase. That is not happening up here in St. Lawrence County. It becomes a very confusing, complex issue because the person gets their tax bill and it has that veterans, that senior citizen exemption on it, and their taxes are hardly anything. Then I go and I re levy those taxes, so the next year, they're not a thousand dollars, they're thirty five hundred dollars. And then they call, they're upset. And once we finally get back on track with the taxes, they were low and now they're high because the exemption was re levy. Then it goes to the next year where the bank calls the person or just sends them an escrow deficiency statement. So we're like three years down the road in this problem. And I'm not saying it's being swept under the rug, but it's a very confusing issue. And just to do away, and and you're not collecting hundreds of thousands of dollars on this, this is very small amounts of money. I did talk to Real Property the other day, and not one assessor in St. Lawrence County does the omitted taxes any longer. Okay.
Thank you.
Next, we have funding options for capital improvement projects with Director of Planning and Development and our city comptroller.
So this evening, for items of discussion, we provided you with two resolutions for discussion and hopefully action. One is a resolution to do a ban for the improvements here associated with the city hall roof. And then the other alternative is to use fund balance for the city hall roof as well as the other projects, many of which we've discussed in the past month or so, including the Dubisky Center sprinkler repair, the security system that's needed at the police department as well as H V A C improvements at the police department, and gearing up for what we know we will need to do in the next, in the next year, the design and engineering for the replacement of the fire department roof. Collectively, with those improvements with the city hall roof replacement project, we estimate the cost to be about five hundred thousand dollars. So you have two resolutions, again, one is specifically for the ban for the roof, although we can amend that to include other items, and then the other is to use fund balance. I did just want to bring it to council's attention that Angela, our comptroller, did give a presentation on where she estimated we would be closing our twenty twenty two year. She gave that presentation earlier this month. And slide two of that presentation is her are her estimates for where we estimate the fund balance to end. And that was an estimated balance of four point four million. Taking into account that we used one point two million in fund balance to balance the twenty twenty three budget, we would estimate that there's approximately, at the beginning of twenty twenty three, three point, I'm sorry, one point, three point two million dollars available. So that's sort of the high level. I think if you have further detailed questions on the fund balance and the finances, those may be better suited for Angela. But we wanted to get action by council, and I guess the last point I would make is if there is a desire to do the ban for the roof or the combination of projects, that does require five affirmative votes. Even though it is on your agenda, it just requires five votes, the the use of fund balance would require four affirmative votes.
Personally, I think we should combine it all into a ban and try to get some things set up.
That's my initial initial briefing on that as well.
I'm all for it, we got the money, let's use it.
Not going to stick it on other councils down the road. As I don't know if anybody's done the math on even what the ban would be, or even if you did it as a serial bond like or ban like some of these were on that was was used, what the interest rates would be, and what you'd end up actually paying for what you're bonding out for. There's a lot of bonding, obviously. What's being said tonight, as far as the potential projects that are going to be needed. And we just bonded for this wastewater treatment plant, we don't even know where the ready projects go, and that already went one point four million higher anyway, just because we didn't do our due diligence and go in the water with a diver. I'm not bonding at this point for, and I'm not definitely not going to put it all together, sorry.
I don't think there's going to be, you're going to get to five votes.
I just, I can't see taking all our savings and spending it on these projects. We have a new city manager here, and we need to get get some things settled. Personally, for the bond, obviously, what does staff recommend? Tom Travers?
Staff's initial recommendation is to use the bond.
The bond.
Yeah, the bank, because we don't want to eat up the fund balances. We also want to make sure that our our ratings with the bonding agencies remain. And I think Angela can explain it better, because there are some requirements from from the government, financial, municipal financial aspect, that we need to keep some amount as reserves in the fund balance.
And it's not that you need debt as well, in order to connect constitutional tax and other things.
You need the debt. Excuse me, you need the debt, Dan, so that you can raise the taxes each year after you after you raise the two percent constitutional tax limit. So people start seeing fifteen percent a year, ten percent on each year after that, along with their water and sewer going crazy. The more you kick the can down the road, you're gonna have to pay the piper eventually. We've been doing that for the last two years, paying all debt, and that's all we've been doing.
So just, the council did approve to enter into a contract to complete the roof. We we just need to know where the funding is going to come from. In terms of these other projects, the sprinkler system, the sprinkler system at the Dubisky Center did fail its five-year inspection. I know we've talked about this a little bit in the past. So this really isn't a project that we can delay. Again, it's more of a question of where's where will we get the funding for? Because not only did we not anticipate failing that inspection, it just was not included in our budget, nor were other capital improvement projects that we could swap this in and out for. So these are what we would consider to be mission critical projects that we really need to advance in the short term in order not to jeopardize our facilities.
Also, since we have a locked contract, we have executed on, almost executed contract, which was approved by the city council for the roof. We need to capture the cycle, because when the weather clears up, we need to get that as soon as possible. So I would like this to not go beyond this meeting, so to have a resolution.
So if there's no support for a ban, I guess.
You're gonna have to use the fund balance, I mean.
So you have a resolution for both?
Oh, well, it was, I mean, it was voted on before, and we did not get to five votes. Council Rees isn't here, I don't think his, I don't know, but I don't think his. So you don't have, we don't have five votes, so it will have to be the fund balance.
Yeah, so council has both resolutions, you can choose which one. Staff is just requesting that council take action on one of them.
I would request to do the fund balance.
Okay, let's do the resolution for the fund balance, Kathy.
I will need someone to introduce it, move it, and second it, please.
I'll introduce that.
Thank you. Thank you.
So it's a resolution authorizing the city manager to appropriate the use of fund balance to finance necessary capital improvement projects in twenty twenty three, whereas Section C sixty five of the Augsburg City Charter permits transfer of unencumbered balance in appropriation made from one department or agency to another department or agency, or the transfer of any unencumbered balance in appropriation made for the division or office of other division or office in the same department upon written request of the city manager. Whereas council has authorized by resolution, capital improvements related to the roof replacement at City Hall and the addition of security system at the Augsburg Police Station. Whereas the city staff has identified the following capital projects as mission critical in need of immediate advancement. City Hall roof replacement at about three hundred ninety six thousand two hundred twenty dollars. Dubisky Center sprinkler replacement repair, twenty six thousand seven hundred and eighty dollars. Police Department security system, twelve thousand. Police Department HVAC at forty five thousand, design and engineering for replacement of fire department roof at twenty thousand, for a total of five hundred thousand dollars. Whereas it's necessary to appropriate a portion of the existing fund balance to eliminate a budget deficit. Now therefore, be it resolved that the city manager is hereby authorized to make the following budget adjustments to the twenty twenty three budget. Transfer to the capital fund AA nine five oh nine. Original budget zero, amendment five hundred thousand, modified budget five hundred thousand. Appropriate fund balance increase AA point two eight one two, five hundred thousand dollars. I'm gonna move that right there, so.
Where where is this resolution? I don't have it.
It's, it's right after the engineering report, if you if you're using your iPad. Right after the resolution to accept the engineering.
Can you move it, Dan?
So I just moved it.
I'll say.
Again, I think it's foolish to do this, but we gotta have the critical work done, so I'd rather, much rather bond it myself for the city.
I concur, Dan, I concur with Dan, I mean, you know, I'm not keen on exhausting our balances, but you know, ultimately, at the end of the day, everybody's throwing around terms that that quite frankly could have been avoided in the long run, would have kept coffers in our coffers in our bottom line, but I'm not going to get into that because I'm not into the debate, but I'm all for a ban.
Kathy, would you please call the roll?
Counselor Delva?
Yes.
Wait, before you do. I'm sorry, I I it was, there's a time delay here. How much does the court system pay? Would they pay for the roof?
Forty some thousand, is that enough?
Yeah, if they do, but it's 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 in the forty range, forty thousand range or less, it's not beyond that.
Do they have the whole top floor now?
They do have the top floor now, yes. They occupy a nearly thirty eight to forty percent of the building.
And we can only get forty, and we can only get forty thousand dollars is to help out?
Yes, because they also make a make payment.
I understand they make a payment, but.
They also, they also make rents to us, they pay a rent to us. So I mean, it's, 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 it's good that they are at least paying us forty thousand on it. Generally, I don't think a renter would pay for a house to be, to, to re-roof somebody else's house. But this is a good, good move by the, or to offer us that help. Okay, good enough.
Kathy, would you please call the roll?
So I'll start over, if I may, Mayor. Counsel Dillaba?
Yes.
Counsel Fisher?
Yes.
Counsel Kennedy?
Yes, even though I think it should be a ban.
Counsel Powers?
I share Counsel Kennedy's sentiment, yes.
Counsel Scamporley?
And another reluctant yes.
Mayor Skelly?
Yes.
Approved.
Does anyone else have any items for discussion? And this brings us to citizen participation. At this time, anyone attending a person would like to address council, please come down to the podium and you'll have two men.
Good evening, I'm Michael Chulley, I live at two fourteen Hamilton Street. First, I think demonstrated by applause by the audience tonight, those here support and appreciate the city manager's decision to direct the chief to hire four firefighters immediately, as was demonstrated in the presentation last week. In the short term, it reduces, it reduces the net cost of fire service to the city and as well reduces the amount of overtime, which is a positive impact on the fire department. Next, with regards to communication to the public with regards to the increase in assessments, I would suggest, besides emphasizing that they're based on the 2023 budget, that there'll also be a clarifying statement that the actual impact on property taxes is unknown until the 2024 budget and 2024 tax levy are determined. And then lastly, with regards to the impact of the increase in assessments in school taxes, as I've stated before to council, in the history of the school tax vote, in the school budget vote, since the tax cap was implemented, the school district every year is stayed within the two percent tax cap. Their balance sheet is currently strong. I don't expect their tax levy will increase by more than two percent. So they will not see a total windfall. At the same time, the increase in the overall assessment to the city could potentially shift percentage of tax in total paid by the city. Possible slight reduction in the town of Augsburg, slight increase in the city of Augsburg. Until the final numbers and equalization rates are determined, those numbers won't be available. But the school district will be communicating that information to the public when it publishes bridges. It's May edition, which they discuss the impact, discuss their budget for the 2023, twenty-four school year. And will do different projections with regards to the tax levy with the new assessments. And, and I anticipate the school tax rate will move down. But again, there will be no windfall in school taxes based on this reassessment. Thank you.
My name's Wendy Hamilton, I've met some of you before. I live on Morris Street here in the city. I'm very glad to hear of a new task force, but I would caution us to look at all of the committees that are already established and whether they're defunct or not, whether they're fulfilling what they were created to do, so that we're not duplicating effort. There are a lot of willing volunteers in this city, but we don't want to keep going to the same well to do the same things. I would also suggest that we look at that previous community, community development plan and not reinvent that wheel, but have a, a new thorough look at that. I'd also suggest that we look at the FRB report. There were several recommendations in that report, some of which had money associated with them if we were to implement them. One of the recommendations was regard to the community land bank. And their suggestion was that we just lift and shift our properties to the community land bank. So when you talk about this Lafayette Street, I'm wondering why such a prized parcel of acreage isn't given to them to develop. Something to consider. I raise my hand to volunteer to help in any way that I can. One place I would love to volunteer is to help update the website. It is frustrating to find information, links are broken, not everybody is, you know, uploading their reports. So it does look like many things haven't happened in the last three years, which that could be. But there are also probably reports that are missing. So I know that the staff at city hall are overwhelmed and burdened greatly, but I volunteer if, if you need that help.
Sounds wonderful.
Thank you.
Have you had a chance to go in and see Mr. Harri?
Oh, I've met Dean.
Oh, good.
Yeah, we welcomed him early on when he, when he first came. Yeah.
Well, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Anyone else?
Evening. Dean, it's good to see you for the first time. I'm Greg McNamara. I'd like to talk about a couple of things tonight. One being my constitutional rights to be in this building were taken away from me for about two weeks last summer by the past city manager and Mayor Skelly. I would just like to meet with you sometime at your convenience to explain to you what took place and what happened. I don't want to get too far into detail, but it did indeed happen. And I would like for steps to be taken to make sure that never happens to anybody again here in the city of Augsburg. I want to thank you for your recommendation to Chief Stall tonight. I think that's a no-brainer. I also want to go back to last meeting. Counsel Rees brought up the project going on next to the intake building. When that was going on, I actually live on the, the east side of that project. My back deck is probably, it's got to be two or three acres from where the digging was taking place. And at my house, as the wind was blowing that way, it smelled like somebody. Not many people in here are probably mechanics, but it smelled like you took the differential cover off an old rotten rear end. It's very stinky oil smell. And I bring my dog down there swimming often. And I, I stopped during that point in time. But one day I was down there and my dog, being who she is, ventured off. And I saw the pit and I took a lot of pictures of what was going on. And it is a complete environmental disaster, that ground. I sent Mayor Skelly very shortly after I took them pictures, all of them. Did he share them with any of you?
I never got any pictures.
No.
Well, I can go back in my archives and they were sent to you. So I gave you an explanation, you didn't answer, but you got the pictures.
I did not.
I reached out to Mr. Caprera and that Blue Water Development, the Blue Water Development place I called said they were a different one than the one that was considering developing here. But these, these, selling Diamond National, assuming that the ground doesn't look like the pictures I have, is very, you'd be ripping the developer off. That poses a contaminated wasteland and until it's dug up, nobody knows what that looks like under there. And I'd be happy to show any of you the pictures. It's, it's bad. I spoke to the DEC, they agreed with me, it is very bad. I believe New York State funded to clean up and it's good they're cleaning it up. That stuff has to get cleaned up, it's the only way we can move forward. But let's not try to jump, jump ahead and act like that land's clean down there because it's not. And the fact that our intake building there is there is certainly a, a concern while this project continues. Thanks.
Anyone else? Anyone attending remotely?
The first individual is registered as Chantel Eller, and I will unmute that individual now. It appears you are self-muted.
Okay, thank you. I just wanted to echo what Ms. Hamilton said about volunteering and assisting the town. I agree with the website as a newcomer here, it is very difficult to navigate and figure out who is available and what is happening. And as someone who's just starting to figure out what's going on in the state as a newcomer to New York State myself, I, I did pay attention to Governor Kathy Hochul's budget report that came out. And I learned that there was a large amount of money being earmarked for economic and regional development. And I'm, I'm not entirely sure how that's being approached, but my understanding is it's being locked up with various representatives. And there's only like one or two people, but maybe as a city, as a collective, we can start shedding some light on making sure that this region gets the funding that is apparently earmarked by the state for the kinds of things that we've been discussing. So I think that would be something that a grassroots initiative could benefit from, you know, getting more people on board to start, you know, banging, banging some chairs and making some ruckus. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else?
I do not see any other hands raised.
I will now make a motion to adjourn to executive session to discuss pro, proposed pending or current litigation. Second? We do not anticipate any action following this session, so I will make, well, first we'll have this roll call. Kathy, would you call the roll?
Counsel Fisher?
Yes.
Counsel Kennedy?
Yes.
Counsel Powers?
Yes.
Counsel Scamporley?
Yes.
Mayor Skelly?
Yes.
Counsel Dillaba?
Yes.
Approved.
Now I'll make a motion to adjourn from, directly from executive session.
Aye.
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 Both?
Aye.
Adjourned.
Wait, hold on, I have to second that, then you can all say aye. Aye. Second. Aye. Good, thank you.
May I have Kathy drop?